Okay, thank you and welcome everybody to this meeting of the Oxford Town Council Committee, the whole meeting for February the 12th, 2025. Before I call the meeting to order, I want to acknowledge we have Giancarlo Piccan and Marion Abbott in attendance. They're in the gallery. If you look behind me up here, we now have a portrait of King Charles III. And on the far wall behind me, if it ever, if you see Patrick, you'll see a large poster up there. That was done at the Oxford Food Security Summit. It's quite interesting to look at actually. And with that, is there any other photograph? No. Oh, yes. Immediately following this Cal meeting, we are going to have a special council meeting and we'll get to that after this meeting is over. Oh, oh, sorry. Yes, this is why I have Linda. Heritage Day 2025, is this on our website?
This is on our.
Okay, we're acknowledging Nora Bernard, who is a MiG MoG activist. And if you want to read the whole bio, it is on our website. It's most interesting. Also, this Saturday, February the 15th is Canada Day.
Flag Day.
Flag Day. Okay, Flag Day was an awful battle back then. I remember it. You must remember it when they switched the flag. It was like the end of the world. Anyway, we got our own flag and it'll be 60 years this February the 15th. So fly those Canadian flags. Square a prop. With that, I'll call this meeting to order. We've all seen the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded up.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carried. You've all seen the minutes. Any errors or omissions? Then I will declare them approved as submitted. So we will start with Section 4 Town Department Reports. Public Works Department, Linda's presenting that. The floor is yours, Linda.
Okay, thank you, your worship. Tonight, our Public Works Supervisor Nick Purdy is unable to be in attendance tonight. So we'll present his report. So over the month of January, weekly water samples have been done, monthly lagoon samples, weekly water checks, weekly garbage collection, cleaned lift station floats, cleaned up cardboard at the transfer site, salt and plowed streets and sidewalks as needed, water break at Lower Main Street. Provide crosswalk training to new employee, new doors installed at new shop, installed new hydraulic hoses on kabota plow, water meter reads, removed Christmas lights around town, removed tree from the corner park, one ton truck needed safety inspection was completed. It did need some work to pass. Moved tipped over shed at the ball field, installed new water shut off at a residence on Black River Road. Moved salt bin to the fire hall, new bearings and shaft for truck salt spreader was installed. Water meters re-reads were done. Meter repairs and replacements, doing roughly about three per week. It is getting hard to schedule this now with snow. So a bit of a delay there. Top up salt bins around town, installed missing street signs, cloud wells, chlorine, building, water towers, lagoons, fire hydrants and lift stations. So all that was plowed. Cleared snow from exit fire exit doors on town buildings and filled reported potholes with cold patch. Daily furnace checks at the theater. We're having issues with the heat over at the theater. So we're doing some daily checks so that gets repaired. Town van heater repaired, new cut edge installed on 624 plow and all equipment washed and greased. And they cleaned the shop.
Excellent. Thank you, Linda. Okay, next is Fire Department Report presented by Bruce. I see Kyle's name, but I don't see Kyle. So we'll just turn the floor over to you, Bruce.
Thank you. So 25 started off as a busy season already. We've had 16 emergency calls for the month of January, six medical calls, seven motor vehicle collisions, two structured fires, one carbon dioxide alarm. Four of those calls were in our mutually aid. Two of the calls were within town limits. 10 calls were in our fire district outside of town limits. This coming Thursday is our training night. So you'll see the fire truck out around members and the trucks around town. But remaining, I suppose, so. We have two members signed up to take a hazmat awareness course. Connor's diving, we're in and serviced our cascade system. That's our system that fills our air bottles for our breathing apparatus. That's an annual event that we have to have done as mandatory. Repairs were done to truck two for the exhaust and the air dryer had to be fixed. It was blowing off airs every, every time we were out. We had our hydraulic tools, our rescue tools, all serviced and inspected and everything passed. So we were quite pleased with that. We had a very successful banquet last month and we recognized a lot of accomplishments within the department. And we wanted to thank everybody for attending and we had a very enjoyable evening. So thank you.
Okay, on behalf of Town Council, I want to thank you for the invite and town staff. I found it most informative and learned a lot that I wasn't aware of. So I really appreciated the invite. And the food was good too. Okay, next up, Administration Reports presented by Linda Cloney.
Thank you. So there's an event report that has been submitted with the council package, but I'm just going to touch on some highlights. So a draft action plan has been created for the Equity, Diversity, Inclusion and Anti-Racism Committee. That's now being reviewed for plain language and accessibility. They're going to meet here again soon to discuss our next steps. But we had a couple of subject matter experts taking a look at this plan as well. So we're excited to see what this is going to look like. There was assistance with the manager of finance with wording of possible funding opportunities to help with financing South Side Water Tank and Puck Wash Road Water Main as well as Main Street Development. So some work on grants had been done on that as well. Also, a lot of work with our asset management and tracking of town owned vehicles. And also the third quarter of water bills are out and probably do here very soon, I would say in a month. Yeah, okay. Also, there was a few transfer cards processed throughout the month. Dog tag renewals have been processed as well. Reminder that dog tag renewals are done annually. So if you have one to renew them annually. Also, the downloading of the 2025-26 tax rule and reports for 25 year from property evaluations has been uploaded. Or actually, I should say downloaded into our system. And also a fair bit of theater interest going on. So we've done some various bookings. And so there's been some action going on with that. And that is what I have to report. I'm going to pass it over to Revan to touch on the manager finance report.
Hi, good evening. Okay, so I did three different budgets. The general operating budget, the water operating budget and the capital budget. So the first one is the main one, general operating budget. And we are doing okay there. Our revenues are about the same as they were last year for what we have in at this point, 91% of them. And last year it was 93. Expenditures, we are a little higher than this time last year. We're, we have some overages in certain departments. And we had some unexpected expenses with maintenance to vehicles in the transportation services. We also had unexpected expenses with, in the fiscal services with the, the amount that we pay the school board. Last year it went up 36,000 and that's been on precedent since I came here. It's never gone up very much, but that is because the value, it's based on the value of all the property in Oxford, not the value of the school per se. So the values, of course, as we all know, has gone up in everyone's property. So. So we have to budget for that for this coming year too. It's another 24,000 on top of that this coming year. So that was a bit of a surprise and we are lower than expected in the Recreation Department. So it sort of offset one another, which kind of worked out good for us in our budget. But we did not have a impound leader this past year. So that's why we were lower than expected in Recreation. So. We're at 78% of our expenditures. As I say, a little bit tighter than last year. We're at 71. Three quarters of the way through, although last year we had a bit of a surplus. So I think we're still going to be okay for this year. That's the general operating. The water operating, we are doing all right with with that budget as well. There has been a slight increase from this time last year. And the expenditures and revenues are on par as to what they would be generally this time of year. We generally have less use each in the third quarter or the fourth quarter. Oxford Frozen Foods has slowed down then to water usage. So that's why it's at 88% of the revenues are in now. So the capital budgets, does anybody have any questions on the water operating or the general operating?
I'd like to go back to one question on the general operating.
Yeah.
School, the buildup you get for the school. How much in total is it going up over two years? What's the total?
It was, went up 36,000 last year. It grew up another 24. So I believe that's 60,000 in two years. And there has not been an increase since 2020. So when I investigated how they come about this figure, I, that's what I found out. It's because of the valuations of the properties within Oxford and that's what they base the rate on. So no doubt, all municipalities across Nova Scotia are experiencing the same thing with that, which is, yeah, quite an unexpected increase. Yeah, so the capital budget, we did very well with that this year. There's a lot of color and stuff to this. It's, it's hard to simplify it, I guess. But basically, we approved a budget for the capital portion. That's without water. That's without the water project. We did Founder Street for 1.5 million. And the expected at the end of the year will be 1.3 million. There's a few projects that came in under budget that, you know, we budgeted more for obviously. And a couple of items that were pushed ahead to next year, they couldn't get done or we couldn't get funding for them. So that's the capital portion. The water capital, and that's for anything to do with water, and that includes the Founder Street. We had in the budget for the water capital, approved budget, 2.144 million. And it came in cheaper than, than our quotes came in cheaper and we were able to get everything done cheaper, although we did still have a couple of unexpected things happen in water. Like we needed a new pump for well four. And so we came in at 1.767 million. So there's also a little breakdown at the bottom there. So you know, the total cost for Foundry and River Avenue Water Main Replacements. And this includes this year as well as a little bit that we spent in the previous year for the designs of this project. So the total cost is 1.667 million. And you can see where the funding, how we funded that. And if you'll note that the municipal town of Oxford, out of that 1.667 million only had to contribute $322,000, which was 19% of the whole project. So we did very good in funding for the rest of that project. The provincial government came up 49% of it. Well, actually more than that, 87% of it. And then the federal government came in 13%. So. Does anybody have any questions?
Can you get us more of those 19 cent dollars?
It's, yeah, as long as you can stack some funding and, and find, find it. That's, yeah.
Anyone have questions for Revan? Thank you. That was.
Well, it's good for, you know, we're staying within budget and and we came under budget with a lot of things. So, so that, that always helps. I also want to let everybody know that I'm working on next year's budget right now. Not a lot of extra to spend, but if you have some wishes, wants, please let me know, email me. So make sure I get them in. Probably should within the next week or two, at least. If anybody has anything they want to.
Good. Thank you. We'll move along. Committees, council committees and board reports. We'll, 5.1, we'll call on Councilor McNutt for a verbal report on recreation mission.
Today we had, we had a Valentine's Day drop in at the fire hall today where the kids made cards and crops and snacks. So I want to thank everybody for coming and our volunteers as always. Monday, February 17th is Heritage Day. So we're going to be at the Oxford Arena from 2 to 4. So the ice will be a free skate and there's going to be some games and things on the ice. Don't forget helmets are mandatory for everybody going on the ice. Nellie's at the rink will be open. They're not normally open on Mondays, but they're going to be open for that. And they're also going to pass out free hot chocolate and cookies. And then we're going to be up in the warm room and we have lots of space painting, Lego board games, puzzles, crafts, things like that. So hopefully everyone can attend Monday, February 17th, 2 to 4. And that's, and we're, we're working on a couple of other things too, some or whatever the thing's called, or monthly Thank you. Workshops. We're all working on some monthly workshops too, and then lots of other things in the planning stage. And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have questions for Councilor McNutt? Nope. Okay, we'll move along. All Saints Grand, the Healthcare Foundation update. Linda.
Thank you. So there was a meeting that was held last month and so I'm going to step away from attending those meetings and my lovely assistant over here, Stan, is going to fill in for a little while until we find a volunteer for this committee. We're hoping that we find someone. They meet every other month and it's in the morning for at most two hours. We, as in the town of Oxford, would pay the travel to attend this meeting. So in the package, if you look at the council package, a copy of the approved minutes is included in the package to give you some content as to what gets discussed, but to mention a few things of the business. They talked about equipment that they purchased. They give updates. They talk about maintenance around the building for the All Saints Hospital. They talk about budget concerns and they get reports from various doctors and treasurers. And, yeah, and they talk about various workshops that happen for volunteers and stuff. So it is actually a very feel-good type of meeting. So if anyone's interested to give me a call, but for now, I'm so thankful that Stan's going to take part in that for a while.
Do they have a Zoom option?
No Zoom option. It's in, yeah, and it's at a boardroom right inside the hospital in Spring Hill.
That's it?
That's it for that.
Okay, we'll move along to items of discussion correspondence.
No.
Do I miss one? Oh, Police Advisor, RCMP report. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So also the Police Advisory Board had met on January 21st. I had a recent meeting. A copy of the RCMP report is in the package. There's actually a couple of extras on the back table there in the gallery if anyone's interested. I had a couple of extra printed there. But just to kind of give you an overview of what was touched on, the RCMP compiles a quarterly report for the town. And so there were, just to update everyone, there was 32 criminal code offenses. Now, not to say these were all charged. These were at least the start of a phone call. Okay, so that's not to say we had 32 in the end, but 32 to start with a phone call. Then we had 86 non-criminal code offenses happen as well. So a total of 118 calls of service between non-criminal and criminal code offenses. Also in that report, you will notice there, they talk about a few matters that occurred in Oxford as well. So there was talk of, there was an assault, family dispute, forcible confinement, fraud and threats. No names are given on these things. Either just kind of give you some content of matters that happened here in our area. So you'll find a report like that on our website as well as in our council package. But also during that meeting, they had discussed the importance of a speed sign, digital speed signs here in town. There's a few roads that tend to have excessive speeding is a concern. Especially a lot of, we're here, it's all through town, but Lower Main Street and Little River Road seems to be the higher, higher where it seems to be happening right now. So they would like to see installment of digital speed signs. We had applied for a grant last year, was not successful in receiving that grant. Where, so they, and we're going to talk about this at the council meeting, but the Police Advisory Board made a motion for council to consider purchasing digital speeds boards. So we're going to capture that at the next council meeting and maybe that might go to a budget meeting, but just wanted to put that out there that it was definitely discussed. And that's it for the RCMP report.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move along to items of discussion correspondence presented by Linda. 6.1 correspondence to Minister Lorr, municipality of Chester's concern regarding the protocols.
Yes. Okay, so the municipality of Chester, it did up a letter of correspondence to Minister Lorr regarding their concern of the code of conduct. And so outlining for municipal of Chester's concern as it relates to clause 14.2 of the Model Code of Conduct for Municipalities, which states a council member must not give special consideration, treatment or advantage to an organization or group due to the council member or person closely connected to the council member being involved with the organization or group. So the reason they're raising this, this clause raises questions regarding the permissible extent of involvement or membership that council members may have with local organizations or groups, as well as the practical implications for their roles in municipal decision making. So based on their current understanding, a council member must declare a conflict of interest and recuse themselves from deliberation and decision making if they're involved with a member or an organization or group that could benefit from council's decisions. But alternative, they could also refrain from any involvement or membership of these organizations. But they feel it's imperative that we express their objection to the restriction. The implications of this requirement are significant, particularly in small communities where council members often play vital roles in local organizations, whether as volunteer or active member. So it's really hard when you're in a small municipality, which you know here as well, right? So their request from Chester, and you can read the full letter in the council package. I'm not going to read the full letter, but they respectfully request further clarification on the definition of involvement and the scope of refusal required under the clause to ensure proper interpretation and application of that clause. Anyways, I think we can relate a little bit sometimes, but yeah, it's hard. But anyways, it's a really good, good letter done out. So I'll share the outcome as I learn more or that I just wanted to put that out there to council. Well, it was a shared letter to all municipalities. It was to be shared here, so.
Okay, anybody have any questions regarding that? Well, we'll move along. Press release, NSFM, emphasis collaboration with province and US tariff concern.
Okay, so this is the hot topic going on right now. So I'm going to read the full, it's a, see here, it's a press release that has been issued. So I'm just going to read the press release. So Halifax, Nova Scotia, February 4th, 2025. So as the collective voice for municipalities, so that's NSFM, which is Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities in the province, the NSFM expresses concerns over the potential economic impact of US tariffs on Canadian goods and underscores the importance of a strong coordinated response. So NSFM proudly represents all 49 municipalities with over 370 municipally elected officials. And we stand with the government of Nova Scotia in working towards solutions that protect local economies, businesses and workers across the province. Municipalities are the heart of Nova Scotia's economy, fostering growth, innovation and job creation, said NSFM President Pam Mood. While we're encouraging by the 30 day delay in implementing these tariffs, the threat remains. Tariffs harm not only local businesses and supply chains, but also the well-being of our communities. We are committed to working with the provincial government to ensure a unified response that safeguards our economic interests. So NSFM urges the federal and provincial governments to continue urgent discussions on reducing intraprovincial trade barriers and diversifying trading partners to strengthen economic resilience. We remain actively engaged with provincial and federal partners to navigate this challenge. Coordination across all orders of government is essential to mitigate the impact of trade disruptions and ensure the long-term stability of our communities. Additionally, we recognize the importance of fostering strong cross-border relationships and remain committed to advocating for the interests of Nova Scotia municipalities in the face of shifting trade policies. So this letter was written on behalf to combine all municipalities. So this was a news release and information.
Good. Thank you. Any questions regarding that? And we'll move on to 6.3, letter from Municipal Affairs, Free Reduction in Interprovincial Trade Barriers and True Resource Development Support.
With, along with a follow-up letter from the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities. So it's a two-part, two-part letter. So February 11th, yesterday.
Right.
Yes. So a letter to the mayors and wardens were sent out by our Minister John Lorr in regards to recent events in our world are changing the landscape of our province and country. We're experiencing new fiscal challenges and that will have a significant impact on our economy. It is clear we need to become more self-reliant and at the same time, we need to better integrate our economy with the Canadian provinces and territories. So our government has recently announced that Nova Scotia must say yes to both the reduction in intraprovincial trade barriers and to resource development within our province. Both steps need to be taken carefully and consultation with our communities. Resource development in particular is of incredible importance. So if you are supportive and agree, I am asking you and your council to signal your support for a greater resource development within our province by letter or press release. So there's an ask at the end. So since that, we received a letter here this morning, today, this afternoon, I think it was. There is a revised council package on the website with these letters in it. Okay. So a letter was drafted from the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities talking to all the municipal officials. So with regard to that letter received by mayors and wardens from Honorable John Lorr, Minister of Municipal Affairs, dated February 11th. They recognize that this letter raises important questions and want to let you know that they are actively seeking clarity on these matters. Their goal is to provide us with the insights needed to make informed decisions on these complex issues. NSFM is aware that there are possible impacts on each municipality and on you as elected officials and that more information is needed before you can respond to the request put forth. Okay, so the request he asked there. Know that we are working with the province to gather that information. Specifically, we are focused on the call for greater resource development within Nova Scotia and the reduction of intraprovincial trade barriers and what this means. We know both are important as we move forward as a province. With regard to the resource development, it is imperative, we are clear on the ask and that the province is aware of limitations, for example, on protection of our watersheds and other water sources, so that we can all move forward together in the best way. So they remain committed to supporting all Nova Scotia municipalities through collaboration and open communication. We can leverage our collective strength to navigate these challenges in a way that benefits our communities and benefits the province as a whole. So, and sincerely the president of NSFM. So there's kind of a weight being asked as well. Just, it's late, it's stuff that came in just recently, but we want, council should be aware of and think. Because you guys are receiving these emails from NSFM.
Well, I made questions regarding that. As if we're adopting a wait-and-see attitude.
More to follow.
Yeah, more, more informed people will let us know. There are a few of them out there, I guess that's everything before, uh, I call this meeting, adjourn this meeting, I just want to point out that. Monday is a provincial holiday, so the town hall and public works offices will be closed that day. And with that, I declare this committee, the whole meeting adjourned. Okay, now. I'd like to call this special meeting, Oxford Town Council to order, first off, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Show moves. Second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Colburn, second by Counselor Jones, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Contrary-minded, none, motion carried, business, three point one, award sale of nineteen eighty-nine Ford CF. Eight thousand chassis cargo low-tilt pumper fire truck, Linda, what was yours?
Thank you, worship. So last night, February eleventh, uh, the fire department committee met to open the bid offers for the nineteen eighty-nine Ford CF. Eight thousand chassis, did I say that right? Chases, uh, cargo low-tilt pumper fire truck. We did receive four bids in total and we want to thank everyone that placed a bid and inquired about the truck, it was nice to see the interest. The highest bid came in from William Vossman for seven thousand one hundred dollars. So the fire department committee made the following motion to council. It was moved by Bruce Rushton and seconded by Arnold McDonald to recommend to Oxford Town Council. To award the sale of the nineteen eighty-nine Ford CF eight thousand chassis cargo low-tilt pumper fire truck. To William Vossman for seven thousand one hundred dollars plus any applicable taxes.
Great, so good.
I'd like to make that motion.
As well.
Do you want me to read?
It, yes.
Okay, I move to accept the town of Oxford's Fire Department Committee's recommendation to award the sale of a nineteen eighty-nine Ford CF eighty thousand chassis. Cargo low-tilt pumper fire truck to William Vossman of Henning, issuing the amount of seventy-one hundred dollars plus any applicable tax.
We have a second or? Okay, we've heard the motion, any discussion or questions?
I think you should have a question. I forget, how many bids did we have total?
Four.
Four.
Yeah, four bits.
Any other questions, comments? During none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, the motion is presented by Counselor Jones, please raise a hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, contrary-minded, motion carried, that concludes. This town council meeting, I declare this meeting adjourned, thank you everybody.